They call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Hey, roll call.
Ms. Spear Two? Here. Mr. Garbats?
Here.
Ms. Laird?
Yes, here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Ms. Ray?
Here.
Move her amendment and sign the minutes of the regular meeting held October 11th, 2021.
So moved.
By Ms. Laird.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Spear Two. There any concerns regarding the minutes? Roll call, please.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Ms. Spear Two?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Garbats?
Yes. Any walk-on items?
No, sir. None tonight.
Legislative reports.
Yes, I want to bring everybody up to date on where we're at with our commodity dollars. Just to do a quick briefing for anyone who's not familiar with that. The issue at hand is the food shortage nationally and how that's impacting public schools. In short, on a federal level, the USDA determines what the nutritional value has to be for school lunches and how much is available for each state in funding. Then the state takes a look at the nutritional requirements, determine what foods would be appropriate to meet the nutritional value requirements, and then they divide the funds for the state at each district based on economic condition. What every district has to do then is go through the bid process for who will be the supplier of those commodities. It's called commodity dollars. In our particular case, Gordon Foods was the winner of that contract with the food shortage. Gordon hasn't been able to fill all of the orders. This is happening all over. So what we've had to do is go to some of the other contractors in the area to get enough food to feed the kids. The issue in addition to the food shortage is that by legislative language, the commodity dollars can only be given to the winner of the commodity contract. So even if they cannot fill the contract, those dollars are locked up for that vendor. So we started at the state level and reached out. Most recently, we're a little step further. I did get a call back from Jim Jordan's office because it was determined that it's federal language. It's going to have to be reworked to give public schools a variance so that in the case that your commodity contract holder cannot fill the order, those funds can be released to other contractors who can. A woman named DeeDee Knapp reached out, took the information. She said, all day, every day, they're getting calls about the food shortage, and she was reaching out to their rep in the USDA to talk about that specific language and has, she said, I have to believe that there is something that we can work on here that's nonsensical. So I will report on the next step as soon as we hear back from that. And that's all for this evening.
That's great. Actually, I have a question. Thank you so much. There was at one point a plan, maybe a meeting with the state reps for tomorrow. Is that been, is that on still?
That is on. Yes. Now, um, thank you for bringing that up. That was our state representative, Gary Click, and he said he was going to send the invite to all of the board members, the Zoom meeting invite.
I haven't seen him one. I don't know if anybody else has.
I haven't either.
Okay.
Okay, so in the morning, I'll reach out to his administrative assistant and tell him that you all haven't received it. But he was going to send it to all of you, and I suggested Tom Anway in addition to yourself, John.
Perfect.
And that is just to talk about the supply chain in general. What's happening nationally and at the state level, not just in public school districts, but for us as a nation and the economy. So for anyone that's available to listen, it is not an official board meeting. This is the state reps meeting, and we're just listening in. We'll report back on that as well.
Super. Thank you.
That's the only topic or the major topic?
That's the only topic is the supply chain issue.
Thank you. Okay, let's superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you very much. Good to see you. I missed you. It's three weeks. We're not used to that long time away from each other, so it's good to see you all again. Just a quick update on our COVID numbers. Our numbers have been very good. Going back a month, we had 27 positive cases a month ago. Then there was 18, and we've only had seven positive cases the last two weeks in the building. So I just want to tell you, we're doing pretty well. I hear there's some hotspots around the state, but right now Fremont City Schools is not one of them. So just want to let you know that things are going quite well. And I think everybody that's here too recognize that we're not quarantining kids out. You know, they can stay in if they're masked. They can participate if they are willing to test. So we're in a good place. So we want to let everybody know that.
I'm curious to know, John, of students who have been identified to be in direct contact, are they choosing to mask and stay? Or are they choosing to?
They're choosing to mask and stay by a large majority.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That's great.
Yeah. And I think actually some of our athletes, I'm seeing them proactively masking just to sort of stay completely off the radar. Yeah, so it's been been a good deal.
Good for them.
Yeah, thank you. All right, and Capitol Conference is for, we kind of turn the reins over here to my very exciting presentation. Capitol Conference next week from tonight, actually. So looking forward to anybody that's going by, right, right now? Okay. And we'll have a session by Shari Mullen down there, so we're looking forward to that, too. So just wanted to, that's coming up. I'll be down there on Monday. I think that's all for me. I wanted to introduce Monique Pollock, who's coming up here to be an expert witness to our elementary art program, because she is up to, right here, Monique, right? So she's just a rock star and does a fabulous job, and I know you're going to be impressed by what you're going to see tonight, but also what you're going to see tonight is what we're presenting in Columbus virtually of our student work. But I'll not steer any more thunder. Ladies, please feel free to have at it.
Good evening, Mr. Garbats, board members, Mr. Detweiler, Ms. Parkhurst. I'm very excited this evening to highlight another addition. We have placed throughout the year, as you remember, academic achievements, portions throughout all of the work sessions of the school year. And this month, we have asked that we highlight our fine arts department. So we are concentrating this evening on our elementary art. We have many projects here, and as Mr. Detweiler said, I have Mrs. Monique Pollock, who is just one of our elementary art teachers in our district that does an amazing job with our students. So I'm going to turn it over, and I'm going to ask Monique to share a little bit about some of the pieces that we have here, some of the things that she brought with us, and highlight a little bit of what elementary art has looked like since we've entered into our new buildings last year with beautiful new studios and some of the projects that the students have been able to accomplish. We will then show you the video that is going to OSBA to represent Fremont City Schools. You'll get a sneak peek. So.
Thank you for having me this evening. I'm excited to be here. I've been teaching here for 13 years now, and two of my children are in the school district. My youngest will be starting next year. So it's been a blessing to have this career as a mother and just as an artist myself and educator. I can't express that enough, how grateful I am. Going into last year, you wouldn't have thought that. That was a head case. I was, but good things kind of came out of crazy. I think I really, I just hit my stride and along with my fellow educators, and we came out stronger for it. Some of the wonderful things that came across with the time I was given are here in front of you. I think students get inspired when they see their art teacher making and creating themselves. So I had that chance, and I got out there and created some installation where the students got involved with. One of them at the beginning of the year, or actually mid-year, I should say, were the massive angel wings. I had students collectively color wings individually. Then I cut them out, created these huge cardboard wings and applied them, and then hung them in the hallway and invited all the students and all the staff to come and take a photo in front of them. And then I played around with some photoshopping and made photocopies for many of the students to take home for Christmas break and teachers. It was just a show of hope, really. It was a stressful year, and everybody was feeling it. So I thought that was a good way to get everybody involved and feel special, really. Another one here is Black History Month. I worked collaboratively with students who came in, and we created this huge, massive, beautiful installation that we had in our hallway representative of the culture. I sent a packet home discussing kente cloth, which is a form of art derived in Africa, and they learned about it and created their own kente cloths. And I posted them alongside of the portrait that we created there. And then some other fun things that also you can take a look at if you would like to later on. But it was, it's just, it's fun. I love teaching, and when students see that you love it, they get excited, too. I was asked to focus on one project that you see presented here that I do with my third graders. It's a tried and true lesson that always is just expressive. The kids love it. They get messy. And it goes to the state standards. I always learning standards, state standards to base my instruction on. But if I'm not feeling it, they're not going to feel it. So I also pick lessons that I know I can deliver, and they'll understand, and they'll want to do themselves. So for this project, we talk about abstract expressionism, which is really the first American art movement. That happened right after World War II. And I introduce it through a documentary, a mini-documentary of a German artist. Her name is Amadea Bailey. And I asked them to watch it and observe the environment she works in, how she creates her art, the process, because it's messy and it's exciting, and it's not always obvious what it is. And abstract art at the elementary level is a wonderful confidence booster because students don't have to worry about making mistakes because mistakes are beautiful in abstract art, and it works. And this is one of those projects that truly just you see from one to the next, how they get to experiment. This is tissue paper painting. I show it. I demonstrate everything I do. It's a glue and water mix, and they apply it, and the colors bleed, or they can layer the tissue paper in different ways. I don't give them direct steps, and that causes them to think outside of the box. Some of them get really frightened. What do I do next? Mrs. Pollock, how do I think through this? Well, it's an emotion. Show me that emotion. What colors are you going to use? What textures do you want to make me feel by looking at it? And they play around, and they come up with ideas that I've never even thought of, and they teach me through this lesson. So that's exciting. You can see how some applied it differently. Some dripped the paint. Some actually just pushed the paint on their physically with their hands. Some left it more three-dimensional. There's really, it's really in their hands. So they take that emotion and they put it out there. We talk about other American abstract artists like Jackson Pollock, Mark Rothko, and Willem de Kooning. We look at it. We explore it. We discuss what processes they may have used to create it. What do they see in the art? Do they like it? Why don't they like it? You don't have to like it. It's really up to the viewer. So they, they really love it. And where does it go from there? So I've used it a few years, you know. Does it get stale? It can, but I like to put new twists on things. So this year, I'm taking that same concept, but I'm applying another layer to it. So I'm going to add music because I love music, and it ties in heavily to art making, too. Just listening to it while I make it, which I do allow the students to do once in a while if they're really good. So in this one, we're going to focus on Vasili Kandinsky, which is a Russian abstract painter, and he loved music, and his abstract paintings were very colorful. And you can see here how they're going to use and look at different instruments. We're going to talk about different music styles, and then they have to apply shapes and lines that they see represented in certain instruments and layer it. And then we're going to do a little Jackson Pollock splatter painting, if you're familiar with his work and can painting, and layer it differently this year and maybe add some oil pastels on top of that to blend some colors and take it in a different, slightly different direction than we're used to. Put a new twist on it and freshen up for me and for the students. So that's what's presented down there. That made sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, please. Ask away.
I think it's beautiful, and I love how the foundation that children get in art class.
Yes, I think it's wonderful.
It gives them the courage to be creative in non-artistic atmospheres as well. I'm a banker, and I'm working on some new financial products. And as you were talking, I'm thinking, gosh, I can remember back to my days as a kid doing this stuff and art with music in the back. And that's why when I need to create something new that's very analytical, I have the music playing in the background. So it'll help them in many ways.
It does. And I tell them art isn't everything. They ask me, why, Mrs. Pollock? Why are we learning about this? And I, oh, don't get me started.
Don't push that button.
It's in science. And I'll explain, and I try to tie it to all the different core subjects, too. But and then they actually, I think they definitely relate. And now that technology is so creative-based and TikTok and all the different platforms they have, I think they recognize that art really could be a massive career choice, whereas it wasn't, you know, totally pushed when I was growing up necessarily. Like, you know, the struggling artist or the starving artist. But I think there's boundless opportunity in the arts. Yeah.
I'm curious, what grades represent?
This is, I teach K through five, and this is third grade project right here.
That's all third grade?
All third grade, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I go for quality over quantity is my theory. Not everybody practices that, but I like to see the students commit to a project, see it all the way through to their biggest potential. I don't like to rush it. If it takes an extra week, it takes an extra week. Everybody finishes it, and they're proud of that work, and it's something they'll take home and hopefully hang on to and not just throw away.
I know you've been here. You said 13 years, right? So your, your first years are now out. Have you been able to follow some of the, some of the careers of some of the students that you've had?
I've seen, I see them all the time. Just this, well, a 10th grader came up to me at Walmart the other day, and I love when students, I don't get to see it that often.
Right.
But yeah, and he's like, do you remember me? And I go, I know you have a really unique name. Give me a clue. Like, it's Jarius. I remember. And it was, and he gave me a hug, and yeah, and it's, it's great. And I do ask him, did you take art class? Did you follow up on that? Because you're really talented. Yeah, I do. I see him.
Okay, we will start the video. Mr. Garbats, it's going to be right behind you.
I forgot to say, mention the art that was represented in that video was all from at-home learners that we hosted weekly assignments collaboratively with my other art teachers. And through our, we made our own home videos and, and presented different formats, president demonstrations, and that's, that's the work they were able to do from home. So it's been pretty impressive to see that it translated, that we were successful doing that.
Very nice. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, that, as I understand it, that's a presentation that has been sent to Columbus as a part of our contribution to the Student Achievement Fair.
That is, that is accurate. This is, this video will be the one that will represent Fremont City Schools at the OSBA Capitol Conference next week.
Thank you. And just in general, I, I'd like to brag. The, we call them the specials in K-5, right? It's, it's music, art, and phys ed class. They, the staff we have running that in all of our buildings, I've never seen such a good crew. I, I know it's tedious for me to say because they're my people. But I go through phys ed class, and it's not just roll out the ball or play dodgeball. They're doing creative movement, and I posted a picture last week that I sent you guys. They had some foam paddles out, and they were batting balloons around and just, just having a great time in a very, not saying not traditional, but it's just not phys ed. And you see what Mrs. Pollock does in her classes. It's just fabulous stuff. And our music teachers are second to none as well. Our programs and all the things that we have, elementary choir, I mean, just, just opportunities for our kids are unbelievable. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to second that.
Please do.
Our special area teachers are just phenomenal.
Phenomenal.
Have been for ever. Our art department has won numerous awards over many, many years. Our students have won many awards. Music is unparalleled. Our people work very hard. And thankfully, the arts have been a real point of emphasis in the district for a long period of time. We do value special areas.
And maybe to clarify the obvious, that was you in there, right, with the mask?
Yeah.
Okay.
I followed that up this year. We had 101 Dalmatians, so I did show up with my face painted again.
Okay. How long does that take to do? How long?
I usually have to wake up 45 minutes more, yeah, earlier than usual. That's fine.
Thank you. All right.
Okay. First hearing of the public. Fremont City School District citizen recognized by the chair may speak on any issue during the recognition of visitors in hearing of the public sessions, but the chair may limit remarks pursuant to the debate regulations of Robert's Rules of Order and Fremont City School District policy. If you wish to address the board, please state your name and address. Limit your statement to five minutes. Direct your comments to the Board of Education president. Would anybody like to address the board at this time? We will go to facilities and operations.
Thank you very much. This first one, just to, I think, does deserve some explanation. The board graciously approved a whole slew, actually all, of our building alternates, if you remember, for the high school because we had bid day savings, and we were under budget and had a hell of money to do that with. We missed one in scope. So this first item is the additional parking. So the, the amount that you approved is in line one there, $76,000 for all the additional parking. We missed that. There was a $23,000, and it was just missed scope. It's the same number of sites, it's the same number of spaces, the same number of square footage and all that, just that we missed on the scope. So that's the first item. We give that its own roll call just to make sure there's any questions. But I ran this, actually passed Anne from OFCC, and she recommended this is kind of the way we do that. There was no irresponsibility. It was just, just missed scope on those additional parking spaces. And I might add, we will have about 100 more parking spaces than we ever had before when this is all done. So we're pretty excited about that, that we're actually growing in our parking space capacity compared to the old building, so.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve item one?
So moved.
By Ms. Laird. Second by Mrs. Ray. Are there any further questions regarding item one? Roll call, please.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Spear Two?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Garbats?
Yes. Motion carried.
All right, item two. From the day, from the day the elementary is opened, I've heard from my, my eight, nine-year-old friends about the swing. Mr. Detweiler, where are the swings? So we're going to do our best to address that with your approval tonight. We've got a bid to put in eight swing sets. Now, that would be two per building. One for the little ones, because if you remember, we do have two playground areas, one for the, like, pre-K 2, and then the 3, 4, 5. So this would be a properly sized swing set for both areas. And in this amount, it's a lot of money, but in this amount includes all the drainage to do it properly, all the concrete curbs to keep the chips in, all the appropriate chips. This is installation, the whole shebang. Also, we, we could do this work, but it's just, we think the pros should do it. It also helps us with our insurance and everything else, so just to have it done. So with your permission, this is an Esser Fund expense, so it is not general funds. Eight play sets, I'm sorry, swing sets for elementary schools.
Can we have a motion to approve item two?
So moved.
By Mr. Price?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Spear Two. Are there any concerns regarding item two?
One thing, Mr. Garbats, with your permission, I may clarify as well. One thing, Mr. Gorbats, with your permission, I may clarify as well. We're trying pretty hard to make sure that each playground is, is similar to the next one. So if you're in the past, sometimes when there wasn't any money from the board, sometimes a PTO would start raising money for a nice playset. And that's, that's all well and good and we love our PTOs. But we're going to try from the outset here to keep our playgrounds very similar so that you can't say, well, over at, over at Krogan, they've got this and maybe over at Lutz, they've got that. And you know, that stuff matters to kids. It matters to the adults as well. So that's, that's one thing too. We want to take this on, do it right, do it from the district office, district wide. So it's the same. Sorry.
So if it gets approved, when would the kids get their swing set?
Well, that's why it's on tonight. We're trying to get it done this year. So we do a lot of planning and bidding and everything this winter. So as soon as the ground breaks and thalls in the spring, we could hit it. So I texted Mr. Rand to make sure. So it would be a springtime project. We're hoping this year, that's why it's on for tonight.
Out of the quantity and quality of the playground equipment compared to what they had in the old building.
That's a good question, Mr. Gorbats. I have to say it's a mixed bag because there was such a mixed bag of equipment. We had some stuff from the 50s that was still at some of the spots. You know, some of that stuff at Hays there in the back, the old metal bars and everything. So, but there was some that was pretty new and really high quality. So I think it'd be a mixed bag. I think what we have is, is top shelf stuff and the kids seem to really like it. And they are constantly on that equipment. So I'd say at least for what we have now, it's all very good quality.
But not, no building had lost any?
No.
Ground in as far as?
Right. No, no, I don't believe we went backwards. There might be a few, maybe as many pieces, because some of them had quite a few spread out in some of the larger playgrounds. But as far as quality and, and surface area on those new equipment, I'd say we've gone ahead. Yes, sir. Especially the fact there's a dedicated for the K2s. I think that's a, that's something we didn't have before.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Spear Two?
Yes.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Gorbats?
Yes. Motion carried. Staff matters.
Yes, thank you, board. I'm asking you tonight to approve a resolution for Senate Bill One. It just passed, the governor just signed it, I think maybe Wednesday of last week. This is something that we did not do last.
We're missing an item. Ours goes straight to staff matters.
Yeah.
I think he jumped, maybe he jumped.
Did I jump?
Yeah.
I jumped. I apologize. You're fine. I'm racing for the end.
That's what we always like.
No, Mr. Gorbats, you are off the hook. I'm taking full responsibility for this. Item three, staff matters. We have two resignations with your approval, Andrea Vera and Timothy Warren. Then you know, I noticed item four is Timothy Warren then, is he is our new transportation manager, as I mentioned last time. So he's actually training this week. Item five, we have classified paraprofessional aide with the salary posted and the approval of a support staff substitute, Colleen Hankins. Item six, um, this is to help us sort of cross train. Justin will spend some time with Mr. Warren. And we like, item six will help us pay him appropriately when he's actually acting in that role. So he'll wear two hats, which is pretty common in our world as we get everybody up to speed. So those are our personnel items for this evening.
Okay. Can we have a motion to approve items three through six?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Laird. Second by Mrs. Ray. Any questions regarding those four items? Roll call, please.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Spear Two?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Gorbats?
Yes. Carry.
Now finally, item seven, right? All right. I got so excited to explain this. We, we didn't do this last year and this, as I said, was from Senate Bill One that the governor just signed. This will allow us to hire substitute teachers that do not have a four-year degree. Now, we didn't do it last year because we weren't having quite the dramatic issue we're having now as far as finding subs. But also I just have to admit, I was personally a little hesitant to do that. I just want, I just, I want college education and I want the whole thing. But here's what we'd like to do with this, and just to understand my intent. This will allow us to hire our own aides that are already in the classroom as the substitute teacher for that teacher. If you remember in the past, I remember as a teacher, sometimes you might have an aide in the classroom, and Mr. Gorbats would certainly know this, but we'd still have to hire a sub because the law said you had to have a certified sub or teacher in the room. So often you had a person there who actually knew the kids, knew the routines, knew the, even the subject material, but couldn't be in them by, by themselves because they weren't qualified. So our intention is to allow, this will allow us to actually pay our own aides the better sub rate of a teacher and then cover that class. So we really will open up some of our aides to be substitute teachers is really what our intention is. Now, I'm not saying we won't go another route, but that's our intent right off the front is to help our own staff who are already there, already in the classrooms, know the students, know the lessons, to step in and fill those spots and then actually be paid accordingly. Now, we may or may not be able to fill their aide position that they're, they're vacating, but we think still as far as what's good for students, having those people in those spots will still be a, a better deal for, for all of us and open up a, a pool of candidates that we've not been able to use in the past. So that's our intent with this initially. We'll kind of see how things go, we may. And actually, you look there, it says they must complete a criminal records check and also be of good moral character. And we don't have to hire anybody that comes off the street. So we would make sure that we did some vetting and checking and reference checking and all that to make sure that we had quality people in front of our students. But I just want everybody to understand that's kind of what our intention is with this resolution tonight.
If an aide is in that position as a substitute teacher, would we make an effort then to get a substitute aide?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So as it's written, it sounds like the resolution lets us apply Senate Bill One as it's written.
Correct.
Just across the board. And you're just going to implement it a little bit differently.
Correct.
But in passing this, you could implement it fully if need be.
Absolutely. That's my intent. Yes, ma'am.
I know Vanguard Sentinel has done this.
Okay.
On the Vanguard board, Greg Edinger has talked to us and he's, especially for them, when you're talking trade classes.
Sure.
You know, their substitute teacher pool is really little when you're talking electrical trade.
Welding. Right.
So for them, he said it's worked out so great for them to be able to use that aide. Plus, like you said, you bump into that sub pay for that, but they're already there. They've already been in there and it's just kind of a seamless thing where, like you said, it's getting from a pool that you didn't have before.
Yeah, helps us. Yeah, thank you. We had about eight unfilled spots today, as a matter of fact. Just so you know, it's, it's, there's always one or two per building that, and it's, it's a variety. It's cooks, it's aides, it's custodians. I mean, we're being hit by all sides, so.
Well, from personal experience, our aides are
rock stars.
Top of the line.
Yep.
People and are more than qualified to run a classroom in many cases.
Absolutely.
If this opens up an opportunity for them to do so, I see nothing but positives coming out of it.
Agreed.
Did we?
No, we need a first, actually.
We need to make a motion to approve item seven. Could we have a motion to approve item seven? Moved by Mrs. Ray.
Second.
Second by Mr. Price. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Spear Two?
Yes.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Mr. Gorbats?
Yes. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Hey, fiscal matters, report of the treasurer.
Good evening. Tonight I have a couple of different things on the board for approval. One of them being the financials for September. A little odd talking about it in November, but, um, kind of have been rolling along at the same, not really much different this much than last month. Yeah, we've had some early purchases in curriculum that have upped that a little bit, but overall we're still doing good. Overall, the expenses are down quite a bit from, for the year. And we've been able to offset some of those normal expenses with grant funds as well. The only other thing I'm going to highlight on the financials is the food service fund. Mrs. Laird had asked to have a little bit more information on. Currently, for the end of September, we had a balance of 260,000. That is very good for our food service fund and that is due to better reimbursement dollars this year over past years. And October looked even better. I just ran a report. Not only did the reimbursement dollars help, but also we were given some extra money due to COVID issues. And so that gave us about 40,000 extra dollars. And that money we are allowed to spend that's not tied to our, oh my gosh, the commodity. Yes, commodity. Thank you. That's not tied to the commodity dollars. So as we are having to reach out to different vendors, we do have some money that we can use for those extra purchases in food service. So we're very fortunate to have more of a cushion right now. We haven't had to have, we haven't had expenses hit higher than what's allowable in that program to have to go to general fund. So it's been able to stay right in the food service account.
But just so everybody knows, the food service account isn't necessarily the same as the commodity dollars.
Yep.
I would be curious to know how much commodity expense had to come from food services versus commodity? And you could just email that.
Yeah, okay. I will get that.
If I made as long as lines too. I, I've been sitting in this chair for almost five years and I don't remember a, a healthy report out of the food service, maybe since I've been here.
Yeah.
Is that accurate?
Yeah, it's been a
I mean, we've been, we've been putting 200 grand a year into that account from the general fund. Just wanted to point out that how much better that is.
Well, and, and part of that is because there's some grant money.
Right. Absolutely.
If we hadn't had that.
No, absolutely.
With the crisis.
Oh, right.
And the reimbursement rates through this have been spectacular, which allowed us to do all the programming and the giving away the food and all that we did all last year. But yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Item nine, I have some more permanent appropriations. The FMS principal account, they had some additional fundraising, so they needed more money appropriated to that. And item 10, that's for us to have Yankel and Associates kind of review our utility bills and just make sure that we're paying what we're supposed to be paying. We do this for a couple other of our utilities. This is a pilot program, so we had to come to the board and ask permission, but we already have some of these programs in place for our other bills. This is just making sure we're not, um, overpaying anything. We will not have to write them a check or anything like that if it's part of the Ohio School Council Association. And if there's a finding in the group, then they'll get a cut first before they disperse those back to the districts.
Okay. Can we have a motion to approve items eight, nine and 10?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Price.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Spear Two. Are there any questions or concerns regarding those three items? Roll call, please.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Spear Two?
Yes.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Gorbats?
Yes. Motion carried. Hey, board member communications and information, Mr. Price.
Thank you to Mrs. Pollack and Denise for coming in tonight to share the, the art projects, my art capabilities you could fit on the tip of my pinky. If I drew a stick figure, it would probably be lopsided and all out of way. It would definitely be abstract. It would fit in.
Everything you do is abstract, right?
It is. It is. When a couple of the art, absolutely. So it's great to see what the kids get to do and to learn and to hear about different artists and, and all that kind of stuff. So it's, that's great to see, especially kids getting back into school. But what they were able to accomplish at home also doesn't translate. Art class doesn't usually translate very well by Zoom. So great job for the teachers to be able to do that and the students. So congratulations to all the fall sports. They're starting to wind down a little bit. Good luck to Evelyn Simonowski.
Yes.
Going on to state for cross country, which is great. Had some great runners this year that got pretty far. Obviously the football team heading into another game against Avon for a playoff game. So good luck to them this Friday. My condolences go out to the family of Kimberly Myers, obviously to her friends here in the district for working here and everything. So it's been a, a tough month for Fremont City Schools when it comes to employees like that. Last thing is, is tomorrow we get to vote. Take full advantage of our freedom to vote. Get out and vote, no matter who you vote for, vote. We have that freedom to do it. We need to take advantage of that. So that's all I have.
Mrs. Ray?
I'd like to mirror Tom's, uh, Remax. I was really impressed and it's, I still can't fathom third graders doing that art and, and drawing. It looks like almost Picasso's. So thank you for the presentation for Denise and Mrs. Pollack. And I also, along with Tom and the rest of our board, offered condolences for Ms. Myers, uh, this, you know, her, her death. She was greatly missed, will be greatly missed. And, um, I'm happy that Megan is able to step in and, and move along and, and keep things going. Also, I, I need Mr. Gorbats to clarify for me because I don't want to, or Mark King. We want to congratulate him. Is it Mark King, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. For his great feat and I'll let Mr. Gorbats explain that so I won't mess it up. Apparently he's in a fall hall of fame and that's pretty neat coming from our Fremont, uh, area. Well, we had one big hall of famer, so now we have another.
Right.
We have another hall of famer.
We're on a roll.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're on a roll. And, uh, just thanks to our, our visitors. We hope that it's been a good session for you, that you've gotten some information that would help you along your way. And I know he said get out and vote, but hopefully we'll see Mr. Price. He's just been an awesome asset, I think, to our board. And hopefully get out and may like to vote for Mr. Price to be back with us again. I guess that's pretty much.
Um, thank you to our art director. This is just beautiful.
Yes.
Kids do it. That's, uh, that's one of my favorite parts of school board meetings and I miss some of those things where students used to be able to come here and present their work themselves. And, and we gave award for their academic achievement, their behavioral achievement and all those things. And I look forward to the day and we'd like to have some discussions of how we can start incorporate.
Yep.
You know, some of those things as well. And I think especially now that people are tuning in to school board meetings either coming or I'm still amazed at the numbers of the people that watch the video for them to see what our children are doing here in Fremont. That's really special. So thank you for that. And likewise, my condolences to the family and colleagues and friends of employees and loved ones that we've lost in our district.
Thank you. I'd like to mirror what everybody has said tonight. My condolences to Kimberly Myers' family and friends. And it's always hard when you lose someone and it's just, you know, my, you guys are in my prayers. And great job for the students, the creative artwork. And it's just, uh, outside of the box, I like that. It's not a traditional, everybody does this and that. They're able to use their own creativity and, and create their own, their own work.
My condolences also to Kimberly Myers' family, coworkers. I'd like to echo Mr. Price's. Congratulations to the fall sports team. I'd like to echo Mr. Price's. Congratulations to the fall sports teams. I think this is the most successful.
Yes.
Season we've had overall for all sports in a long time.
I'm actually working on a full report of fall sports for you, so I'm going to put that together, so you have some names and records and wins and losses. And I thought that we'd get through football, and then I could include that into the whole thing. So Mr. Burns working on some numbers for me.
I think most of the teams, if not all of them, finished in the top half of the league individually. We had numerous athletes, student athletes make first team all league, all district. We had a couple of football players who made first team offense and defense, which is.
Tremendous.
An amazing accomplishment. We had more than one do that. I mean, the track is a very talented league. So if you're making first team, that's a huge accomplishment. If you're making first team twice, it's almost an amazing accomplishment. So congratulations to the fall sports teams. Congratulations to Mr. King, Mark King, our assistant athletic director, was inducted into the Ohio High School Athletic Association Hall of Fame for officials. He was a baseball umpire and a basketball referee for many, many years, I think thirty or so. And, you know, his achievement in that domain is at the top, top of the heap. I mean, you know, you know, a person is doing a good job as an official when you don't notice that he's officiating. And that's, watching Mr. King officiate over the years, that's pretty much how it was. I mean, he was doing his job, and doing it exceptionally well. And I happened to run into him today in another school district. Unbeknownst to me, he's teaching officiating classes in eight different schools around the area. He's a busy, busy guy. And he helps do that with our district, too, in addition to being the assistant athletic director. I'm sensing that our district is beginning to stabilize. A bit.
A bit.
Okay, we're probably not quite there yet.
We're going the right direction.
But we're in the right direction. And that's a credit to our superintendent and staff. I mean, this has been, to say, an unusual period of time in education is an understatement. The obstacles are many. They always have been, but they're unprecedented now. And we have a lot of work to do, as does every district. And helping our students, I hate to use the term catch up, because it may not happen for some students. They've missed a lot of school, and they've missed a lot of interaction with teachers. But as much as we are able to do in that area, we need to try to do, obviously. But as long as we're going in the right direction, that's cause for celebration. I'd like to thank my colleagues on the Board of Education here for being patient with me during the last several months, when I could barely hear what anybody was saying. You might have noticed, I didn't have to use my thing today. After my surgery, which seems to have been successful, I can actually hear you.
That's great.
I can always hear Tom.
Without the screen, you can hear Tom.
But I appreciate your patience, me saying, what, what, what?
Yeah, my husband needs it.
So without entertaining, a motion to adjourn to executive session, discuss item B.
So moved.
By Ms. Laird. Second by Mrs. Spear too. Roll call, please.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Ms. Spear too?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Dre? Mr. Price?
Oh, yes.
Oh, you can't hear me. I'm sorry.
Can I use your little earpiece, please? I can't hear Megan.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Gorbats?
Yes. Our next meeting is in two weeks, November fifteenth.